Good morning, everybody. It's my pleasure to call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors for June 24th, 2025 in Santa Barbara County. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Lavignino.
Here.
Supervisor Lee.
Here.
Supervisor Hartman.
Here.
Supervisor Nelson.
Here.
And Chair Capps.
Here. At this time, please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is the approval of the minutes from our June 10th meeting and also the June 17th budget hearing. May I please get a motion for those?
Hartman moves approval of both.
Nelson, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. CEO, anything to report?
No report this morning, Chair.
Okay, sounds good. Madam Clerk, do you have any announcements about today's agenda?
Chair Capps and members of the board, I do have a few announcements this morning. An addendum was posted on Friday, June 20th, 2025, amended item number 14 on today's agenda. Administrative item number 14 is from the Community Services Department regarding a professional service agreement with Santa Barbara Alliance for Community Transformation, SB Act, and Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, FBSMV, to operate continuum of care advisory groups and the addendum amended recommendations A and B with an amendment in recommendation A to a not-to-exceed service agreement amount of $39,750 and an amendment in recommendation B to a not-to-exceed service agreement amount of $40,000. The changes included in this addendum have been posted and made available online to both the board and the public. Since there are no requests to speak on this item, it may be added to the balance of the administrative agenda. Additionally, administrative item number one is a resolution sponsored by Supervisor Hartman's office commemorating the 60th anniversary of the solving shoe store. Unfortunately, the honoree is unable to attend today's meeting due to an unforeseen emergency. As a result, this resolution will be presented as an honorary resolution today. And lastly, for the Board of Supervisors, methods of public participation and provide public comment on general public comment or an item on the board's agenda, please see page two of the agenda. Individuals that would like to provide verbal public comment may do so via Zoom by registering in advance via the link available on page two. If you have any questions, please contact the Clerk of the Board's Office at area code 805-568-2240. Again, that number is 805-568-2240. And that concludes my announcements for today.
Okay, thanks, Madam Clerk. Next up is our administrative agenda. Would any board members like to pull any items? Supervisor Nelson, I have you with A29.
That's correct. Thank you. That's it.
Anything else? And I have pulled A12. Any others from the board? And how about the public?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have no request to speak from the public on the administrative agenda today.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the balance of the administrative agenda except for A12 and A29.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we will move to our resolutions to be presented. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, will you please read administrative item number two into the record?
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number two is sponsored by Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution of commendation honoring His Holiness, the Dalai Lama's 90th birthday, and recognizing July 6, 2025, as Compassion Day in Santa Barbara County. And joining us in person today, we have Teppo Tukul and Haiti Perez. I believe Haiti is unable to join us, but Teppo, if you can please make your way to the podium, and I will go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama, Nobel Peace Prize laureate and spiritual leader of Tibetan Buddhism, has spent his life advocating for peace, nonviolence, compassion, and human understanding. And whereas His Holiness has inspired millions around the world regardless of religion or nationality with his message that love and compassion are necessities, not luxuries. Without them, humanity cannot survive. And whereas compassion is a fundamental human value that advances mutual respect, understanding, and kindness, forming the basis for a more inclusive and peaceful society. And whereas acts of compassion, both big and small, supply to the mental, emotional, and physical well-being of individuals and communities. And whereas July 6, 2025, marks the 90th birthday of His Holiness, providing an opportunity to honor His lifelong commitment to promoting universal values of kindness, ethical responsibility, and care for others. And whereas Santa Barbara County celebrates the rich diversity of its communities and believes in the power of compassion to strengthen bonds, promote healing, and foster a more just and peaceful world. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved that this Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara hereby proclaims June 21st, 2025 as Compassion Day in honor of His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama's 90th birthday, and calls upon residents to practice acts of compassion, service, and connection in their daily lives, passed and adopted today.
Oh, thank you. Making the noble observance of the years of compassion and the 90th birthday of His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama, communities around the world come together to honor a life dedicated to peace, wisdom, and universal responsibilities. These milestones celebrate His Holiness' tirelessly effort to promote compassion in the faith harmony and rights of Tibetan people, offering inspiration for all embarrassed kindness and moral courage in today's world. Thank you for the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Barbara County proclamation as Compassion Day in honor of His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama's 90th birthday. The proclamation will be handed to His Holiness on his 90th birthday, July 6, 2025, in Dharamsala in India. On behalf of Tibetans in Tibet and exile, we thank you for your support for Tibet and its nonviolence, culture preservation. As a Buddhist, I pray for this uncertain world. May fear turn into courage. May hatred dissolve into love. May confusion give way to wisdom. Let all beings live in peace with open hearts, in harmony and understanding. May our world heal and awaken. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Hartman.
I was thinking, you know, what does Compassion Day mean in Santa Barbara? And I was looking it up. Social feeling that involves sensitivity to the emotional suffering of others and a motivation to try to relieve that suffering. And I think that's something that we want to carry with us every day, but today is a way to renew commitment to that. The Dalai Lama has been an exemplar worldwide in modeling that for all of us. So thank you so much for being here and bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, thank you, Teppo. You do so much for our community. I was able to attend the celebration on Saturday with about 100 people, maybe more. And I had looked up, how many times has the Dalai Lama been in Santa Barbara? And it appears to be over nine, maybe 10. And so I asked for a show of hands in the room of folks, how many had been with the Dalai Lama? I know that my father had the honor of having met him in the past. And about a third of the room had actually been in some sort of teaching with him. And so the reach is so profound, even so far away, yet we all signed a card and had a birthday cake. And what I was really struck with, with the notion of compassion is just how strong our interfaith community here is in Santa Barbara County. Just people of all different faiths really come together for strong issues of compassion and caring for one another, especially now. So especially you, Teppo, you do so much. So thank you for being here. Okay. Well, I guess that is it for our resolutions today, so we will move on to general public comment. I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead. We'll move to the administrative items pulled by the board and public.
Chair Capps and members of the board, our first administrative item pulled is A12 from the Community Services Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a first amendment to the Galita Beach Restaurant Concession Agreement.
Okay. Director Amherst, I don't know, I pulled this just because I wanted to highlight, I'm very much in support of it, so I didn't pull it for any reasons to ask questions, but more so to just say, this is a good, this is good progress of reaching a new lease. And so I'm hoping that my colleagues will also have come to that conclusion. I know some of you have been out to the Elwood. It's a very exciting development after years of trying to get that restaurant up and going. Like so many people, I grew up going to the beachside, that restaurant that was there, and then to not have it be functioning. And so this lease is a step in the right direction to give them longer time to make up for a lot of the flooding that happened during 2023 with the atmospheric rivers. So again, I just wanted to lend my support and shine a little light and say, it's a good time to go to Galita Beach and visit the Elwood because things are really buzzing. It's pretty much packed when you go. And I think that this lease will help them kind of keep that progress going. So that's all I really had to say unless anyone had any questions on the board. Supervisor Lee.
I just want to say I had lunch there and it was one of the best meals I've ever had. So encourage everybody to go out there. As someone who understands the business, they do a great job. So get out there, have some lunch, have a drink.
Great. That's it. With that, I will take a, I will move to support staff recommendation of A12.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Motion carries. A29.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number 29 is from the Planning and Development Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding approval of an agreement for services of independent contractor with RRM Design Group for architectural design review services.
Yes, thank you, Chair Capps. I pulled this item, ask questions for staff on this. Ask Director Plowman. You know, as far as the, there's two portions of this contract. It's the ADU plans that are going to be done in advance that people might be able to take off the shelf. And then there's also some design work that RRM would do for us on certain projects. And I don't have any issue with the design work. It sounds like it's great. I'm glad you guys are outsourcing some of those professional services to RRM. They're quite a professional firm and well-respected by many inner communities, including myself. I am kind of concerned about these pre-ADU plans. I know that we all on SB CAG already approved a kind of pilot project through Lompoc, and that was supposed to be made available. I guess my question is, where's that? I also know that there's a lot of other companies out there that are doing this and have pre-approved plans. And I'm just kind of wondering, you know, is there really a need for the county to get in the same space? Are we potentially limiting, you know, or competing with the public here, contractors that have already paid to have pre-approved plans? How many pre-approved plans do we have in the county? So the board letter was a little incomplete for me on the full package of $50,000 is not a lot of money in the scheme of things. It's still a lot of money for you and I, but I just want to kind of understand this a little bit better and wonder if it's, if we're just duplicating services potentially here that really, and the other piece of information I want to share with my colleagues is there's over 300 ADU cases that are in process right now. So county and the unincorporated areas. So it seems like it's already working. I don't know if we need to get involved in this business part of it, so help me.
Sure, sure. Supervisor Nelson through the chair. First, I will start with, we have a program in the housing element that says by 2025 December, we will have a pre-approved, sets of pre-approved plans for ADU. So it was an action item that we identified when that housing element was adopted. The Lompoc project, sort of, I'm not exactly sure where they are, but we had reached out to them to work with them on it, and there just was not a lot happening in that direction. So what we did is looked at existing pre-approved plans from other jurisdictions, and we got approval from those other jurisdictions who had paid for the development of those plans to use them. And the ones that we liked happened to be designed by RRM. And so we reached out to RRM and said, what would it take for you to modify these construction documents so that they would be Santa Barbara County specific? And so we ended up picking four different sets of plans. So we have four different sizes of ADUs and from multiple jurisdictions, we pulled them. So really, we're taking advantage of the work that's already been done, and those other jurisdictions were really generous in letting us use those plan sets.
Sorry, Director Plowman, how many pre-approved plans do we already have on the books, though? Because different companies can come in and get pre-approved plans through us, and it's a special kind of certification, right? There's an assembly bill that requires those and then to have it on the website and whatnot, so.
So, yeah, I don't believe we have any of those at this point. We've done some modular. So I don't know of any that were pre-approved in our building permit process. But we, as I said, we have worked with the modular companies. I think there was an article in the newspaper recently where we, they do some construction in their manufacturing facilities, and then we can view their plans and sort of pre-approve that. But to my knowledge, I haven't seen any pre-approved plans. These would be our first.
Okay. Well, then that's helpful. Then I'm comfortable then moving forward. I had heard there was quite a few in our community, so I'm hearing that there's not.
Yeah, I could check with our building official, but I'm not aware of them. Yeah, I could check with our building official, but I'm not aware of them.
Because I just didn't want us to go compete with the private sector that's out there doing this as a, something, you know, a competitive advantage. And obviously, it's not necessarily hurting the market now that these aren't out there because of having 300 in the pipeline right now, that's a significant amount, that's over twice of what we predicted in the Housing Element on an annual basis. So I think that's good for us to, to be seen, and, but this potentially helps that. And like I said, it's $50,000. I was just, you know, trying to make sure that there was money well spent. Again, I understand what you said about RRM bringing these plans over from other jurisdictions because that is probably, I think it's nine, let's see, about 12 plans altogether, so 12 plans for about $50,000 is probably a pretty good deal for government work. So I'll go ahead and be one to support this.
Thank you. I just want to, since you, since you pulled this, I just, I did want to ask to break it down and go big picture. What will this mean for someone who wants to build an ADU? I mean, how much will this simplify things versus coming up with our own plans?
Sure.
What would the timeframe, if you had to put a ballpark difference in terms of timeframe and cost?
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, I can tell you that it will probably save an applicant between $20,000 and maybe higher, maybe 25.
Great.
For having a set of plans drawn up.
Great.
And then a few months maybe in terms of the amount of time it would take somebody to draw up plans. That's for something that's specifically designed, like if they took plans from another, a friend or something like that, they might be able to go faster. But if you're coming from scratch, that's probably what it's going to take. And so I think it will help applicants move more quickly through the process because when it goes through our, you know, it's already pre-approved, all those construction documents are already reviewed. And so that will really speed things up in the permitting aspect of it, too. So it's the pre-planning and the permitting.
That's great. Okay, good to hear. Well, I'm supportive as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead and make the motion to approve A-29.
I'll second.
Okay, great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we're to the point of the time for general public comment, now that we finished the administrative agenda. So it's the time for anybody in the public to speak on anything that's not on our agenda. And Madam Clerk, are there requests to speak at this point?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have five requests to speak from the public on general public comment. We are going to begin on Zoom with Richard Solomon, then we are going to return to Santa Barbara with Cesar Peralta. Richard?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Could you please transfer me over? I neglected to put the right one. I want to talk on an item on your executive session, the closed session.
Yes, this is appropriate time for you to speak during general public comment on the closed session agenda.
Oh, well, good morning.
Hold on just a moment, Richard.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, I'm just looking to counsel for some guidance.
So my recommendation would be that you can take, comment on closed session, the closed session item, and then also separately take general public comment.
Okay, let's, let's proceed with comment on closed session. Prior to, then we'll go back to comment on, for general comment.
Great, please proceed, Richard.
Okay, thank you very much for accommodating that. So I represent Yana Zimmer in litigation. She was compelled to file against the county. And I say compelled because she was never allowed any appeal of any of the staff's decisions in effectively denying her SB9 application to split the lot. No, the board, the board didn't come, no one came out to look at the property and to basically see what, why the conditions being imposed on the lot split were illegal, not justified by the law, and were physically impossible to fulfill. She was compelled to file a tort claim to preserve her rights and to give you the opportunity to correct the staff's errors. The matter was denied, the tort claim was denied without, again, without any hearing, without any input, further input from us. She was then compelled to file litigation because she asked the county council for an extension of time to allow further discussions. They refused, and therefore we had to file the lawsuit. We are now pending a hearing on the SB9 claim. The board, the judge overruled the county's demur or challenge to that particular claim, and that's going ahead in, in August, so in October, sorry. The HCD, the Housing Community Development Department, has given and provided an opinion that under SB9, the counties cannot require any off-site improvements. And that is the key legal issue in this case. They have required Zimmer to provide off-site improvements and to pay for them, and even worse, to have them completed before they will even consider her SB9 application. All three of those demands are not justified by the law. We've pointed that out. The court apparently at this point, in the pleading stage, agrees, and therefore we're going ahead with the trial in October. We asked the court to, we, all of this was, we, we've tried to settle this case without the payment of any fees, attorney's fees, costs. Now it's two years later, construction costs have risen substantially, and that means we have been damaged. I've spent a lot of time on this case, and therefore my attorney's fees should be recovered. So we've put an offer on the table to the county council, which I hope she'll be, I presume she'll be discussing with you in closed session. And thank you for your consideration of a possible settlement.
And that concludes public comment on the closed session agenda today. So we are going to return to general public comment and begin here in Santa Barbara with Cesar Peralta, to be followed by Leo Smith. Cesar?
My name is Cesar Peralta, and I'm a born resident and citizen of Santa Barbara, California. I know that today the city leaders and representatives are here to consider recommendations regarding several, several items on the agenda, and I'm here to ask nothing different. I would like the city leaders to consider reevaluating a corrupt tyrant act done against me on August 15, 2023. I was arrested while innocent and charged with disobeying court orders, then withheld from attending my civil lawsuit versus Dr. Romero. I was denied the right to introduce evidence, arrested with a no-bail order, then charged $9,000 for failing to appear at my civil trial conferences. My public defender, Susan Cinderler, had changed my court date and time at the last minute, and nobody showed up to my trial. I was then arrested and denied the right to introduce evidence as to why I couldn't pay child support. And at the time, I was suffering from a separated shoulder, AC joint, and winged scapula with the long thoracic nerve damage, plus lower back and rib pain. But the court's representatives acted like it was in the best interest of my child to separate me from my child and arrest me for failing to pay child support. My medical treatment was delayed by Dr. Romero from 2020 to 2022, and he falsified medical documents to indicate improvements in my health when there was no improvements. I stayed injured for six years because of Dr. Romero's staff and false medical reports. I was arrested because the doctors didn't want to verify my injuries through a court ordered DCSS medical verification report, the public defender was, that the public defender was asking to be signed by a doctor. Therefore, she didn't want to see my x-rays, photos, or injuries. I filed the complaint versus the public defender in 2024, and it was corruptly settled without any evidence presented to the risk management team, which includes Mona Miyamoto, Greg Milligan, and Madeline Orr. I was told that $12,500 was the max the city can do for my false arrest, even though it forced me out of a disability hearing, medical treatment, and a $250,000 civil lawsuit versus Dr. Romero. I explained that I was still in pain, and I was being charged $9,000 for failing my conference when I was arrested, but I was told again that, that it's all the city can do for me, take it or leave it. And so after three years of asking for attorneys for help and then filing my own complaint, I was forced to settle my complaint for the false arrest for $12,500. But I remember telling the risk management team of Santa Barbara that if that's the max, that's the max they can do for me, then there's nothing I can do but accept the settlement. I later found out it was a lie because just recently the city leaders approved a $50,000 pay increase for themselves just to be at medium pay. My life and ability to work has been altered by the doctors, city reps, and courts of Santa Barbara for no real law of reason. I have been punished and forced out of benefits and assistance, and my daughter to this day has not received any funding or help from the child services. All the, all the child services have been able to do, or has the power to do, is revoke my license, which they did. I was forced to stop driving, forced to stop working DoorDash, all because my daughter needed money. To this day, I cannot work as I once could because I have a permanent weak right shoulder. And for the last three years, I've been averaging $5,500 per year doing DoorDash due to my injuries that went untreated for six years. So I'm here today asking for the corrupt actors and representatives to be held accountable and/or ask the city leaders alongside the risk management team of Santa Barbara to reevaluate my complaint versus public defender Susan Cinderler, a case that forced me out of due process, violated my civil rights, plus forced me out of a civil trial and disability hearing.
Thank you, Cesar.
I was lied to and forced to accept the city leader's month paycheck of $12,500 for all six years of pain and suffering and for my false arrest.
Thank you, Cesar, that is your time.
Okay.
We will now go to Leo Smith, to be followed by Cindy Cardenas in Santa Maria. Leo?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Capps and Board of Supervisors. Good day to you all. Good day and blessings to you all this day, June 24, 2025, which marks the 111th birthday, the ninth heavenly birthday for my grandmother, the esteemed Sybil Pastora Paisley Bryan Hamilton, who birthed nine children and mothered thousands by whose prayers, her love and care I am here standing before you today. She gave birth to immigrants from the island of Jamaica, and I, being a naturalized citizen, am grateful to them for all the sacrifices and dutiful toil my forefathers have endured to give me these opportunities. My daughter, who was of Jamaican ancestry and also Native Americans, currently residing on the reservation here in California, makes her a very unique individual, being of the first-generation American emigrating here to this country and also of the very first Americans. The original peoples here of this land, it's our endeavor to see that all persons can be saved and that all people may live their best life. Eternal Life Organization LLC is a do-good company. We see the unfortunate reality of disillusionment among people and among young individuals in particular, we know that many people are hurting these days. We see the necessity in the numbers found in the suicide rates for all people and especially young individuals as quite alarming and truthfully is unacceptable. We believe and know that it's time to change the narrative that plays in the hearts and minds of the people today. That is why Eternal Life Organization LLC to become global. Eternal Life music, foods, builds, health, and schools are designed to fulfill these initiatives, initiatives to feed, house, provide healthcare and education here in Santa Barbara, this country, and all across the globe. The endeavors are driven by, one, branding and merchandising, company signatures; two, music that has already reached number-one status in its genre even prior to promotion or marketing; and three, appearances such as concerts and gatherings that are geared to create, instill, and maintain the spirit of life and dignity throughout for all attendees and for those in favor. Free classes that we look forward to offering regarding literacy training, self-esteem and self-image, life skills, English, Spanish, benefits of sobriety, sexual and moral integrity, neighborhood restorative justice program, and many more classes that we look forward to offering free to the public. Paid events such as success training, motivational speakers, financial advancement training, legitimate stock market training, concerts, and much more. All ages are a demographic group. The vision is to imagine clothes, shoes, posters, anthems promoting self-esteem and self-successful living. Imagine schools, skateboards, formal wear, athletic wear, designed by those who truly desire our people to have long and beautiful, healthy lives. What I'm asking for is the possibility of agendizing Eternal Life Organization for funding in regards to grants, direct investment, and applied loans, as well as available space here in Santa Barbara retail establishments. Consider that people, persons, imagine the truth that you have a network of sincere and dedicated persons providing somewhere fun, respectful, and where there are no drugs, violence, or promiscuity permitted. Please, Santa Barbara County members of board supervisors do agendize, and Lord willing, approve adequate funding to get things moving prosperously and always successfully at Eternal Life Organization. Thank you for your consideration.
We will now go to Santa Maria, to begin with Cindy Cardenas, to be followed by Denise Tell. Cindy?
Unfortunately, we are having trouble understanding Santa Maria. Can we do another test to see? I thought I heard Bill. Chair, perhaps we could take a break and our IT experts in Santa Maria can pull up a laptop and, and we can return for public comment after we take a departmental item number one?
Sure.
Or we could take a break.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
Great, let's take a five-minute break. And Bill, if you can get up a laptop for us, for the members in Santa Maria to use, that would be wonderful.
Will do.
To school to be a doctor or a nurse, physical therapist. These are the skills that they can come in and actually use. And I just know that when I share with them how much money they make, right away, they'll look at me and say, oh, my God, I make more than that at a fast food restaurant. So I just know that making these kinds of jobs attractive for our community would be well worth looking into. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Denise, and that concludes general public comment for today.
Sounds really good.
Yes, we are indeed over 20 up here, but thank you and thanks to all of our members of the public that have come to speak. Appreciate it. So with that conclusion, we will move on to departmental item number one, Flood Benefit Assessment Program.
Chair Capps and members of the board, departmental item number one is from the Public Works Department, Board of Directors, Flood Control and Water Conservation District. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Flood Benefit Assessment Program for fiscal year 2025 through 2026.
Good morning, Chair Capps, members of the board. I'm Walter Rubicaba with the Flood Control and Water Conservation District. And this morning, Andrew Roff, our environmental manager, will be providing an update on the proposed benefit assessment program for fiscal year 2526.
Thank you, Walter. Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. As Walter mentioned, I'm Andrew Roff with the Flood Control District. As a refresher on the Flood Control Benefit Assessment Program, this voter-approved program began in 1980 in response to the approximate 60% reduction in revenues due to Prop 13. The Benefit Assessment Program is a fixed fee attached to parcels based on the land use type and geographic location with that revenue used to fund the Flood Control District. In 1996, the county went back to the voters with a proposed increase to the benefit assessment rate, and only the South Coast Zone voted in favor of that increase. Here on bullet two, fortunately, ordinance 3150 was adopted, which allows for an annual increase up to the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, which has helped funding keep pace with inflation. The proposed action today is to enact the CPI adjustment for the next fiscal year. As you can see in the last bullet, the proposed CPI increase for this cycle is 3.02%. This next table has a data summary which shows the various rates for different parcels, which are separated by land use type or group across the top and the regional location or flood zone in the left column. Column C here is highlighted as an example. Group C are residential parcels, and Group C serves as the baseline for the other groups, meaning that the rates for the other land use types are factored either up or down from Group C based on that land use type and the size of the parcel. Using two of the outlined items as samples, for example, a residential home in Group C in the Orchid flood zone, the new benefit assessment would be $5.72 per year, which is a 17 cent increase compared to last year. And the other highlighted example in the South Coast Zone, the proposed assessment would increase to $32.06, which is a 94 cent increase compared to last year. This table indicates the ongoing reimbursements that Flood Control is pursuing after storm response operations in 2023 and 2024 across the different regions in the county. We are working hard to secure approximately $21 million through emergency FEMA reimbursements, and we're working closely with our federal contacts, but these reimbursements are not guaranteed. There are always uncertainties with emergency reimbursements, and even more uncertainties now with FEMA funding in 2025. So these reimbursements are considered at risk. The Benefit Assessment Program is a key source of funds that supports Flood Control's mission and operations, and it's important that the assessment is adjusted as proposed today in order to keep pace with inflation and rising costs. This is even more important given the uncertainties with the emergency reimbursements currently. These images show two of the major capital projects completed last fiscal year, the debris basin improvements and fish passage projects at San Ysidro and Cold Springs basins, as further examples of the work supported in part by the Benefit Assessment Funds. Today, we are requesting approval of actions A through D listed on the board letter related to the annual increase in the benefit assessment rates. If approved today, the item would return to your board on July 15th for a second reading and final adoption on the administrative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, just a brief comment. You know, I think this is one of those fees that is, you know, good work that we do in the county that I've always supported the increase of this. I think that we get a lot of bang for our buck. I think that this is the benefit that's provided, at least to my constituents, is far greater than what they're paying. And it's something that in the future, I think that we probably should take a look at potentially increasing and going back to the voters on because, you know, I think that if we haven't seen throughout the last couple of years the impacts of flooding in our areas, you know, I think it's very real, and it's some place that needs additional investment, and it's something that we need, frankly, the county and the Flood Control District to step in to do, something the private sector couldn't do on their own. And I think, like I said, we get a great bang for our buck out of this team, and I'm happy to support this.
Excellent. Supervisor Hartman.
Thank you. Couple of questions. The first is, does this help to fund the Montecito Flood Control Master Plan?
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair. Partially, our goal is, we're going after quite a few grants, federal grants, Caltrans grants. So our hope is to fund it as much as possible through grants, but yes, it will help supplement any matches or funding that we don't get.
And will that master plan, excuse me, serve as a model for other areas? I mean, I know it's site-specific, but is it? I think of community wildfire protection plans, and we're trying to get those throughout the county, and I just wonder if there's an analogy here.
Yeah, Supervisor Hartman, through the chair, that is the goal. The next one we'd be working on is probably the Santa Maria Valley Orchid area, and then expand that throughout the county.
And then, I'm always running into questions about, what does a county do? What can I do? Why won't the county come clean out my creek? And I don't see much on your website. I just wondered if you could do a fact sheet about that, that it's complicated to try to explain about public trust resources and, you know, what people do and don't do, what they're allowed to do, what we're allowed to do, what our permitting process is. If you could, if I, when I get questions, could refer them to something on your website about what you will and won't do and why, and what people can do individually and not do? That would be enormously helpful. I see Director Sneddon taking a note, so I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair, yeah, thank you. That's a great idea. We'll tune that up.
Well, thank you. I agree with Supervisor Nelson that this is a small increase for really a big impact, and I appreciate the department for being really responsive to the constituents that I've had who have been concerned, mostly when we had those atmospheric rivers in 2023. But my question really is about prevention versus disaster relief, and how much, if you can say, would these impacts go if you had to ballpark it? You know, how much of the funds go to actually preventing floods versus actually coming in and cleaning up after there have been?
Yeah, Supervisor, Chair Capps, it's hard, it changes year to year, right? When it's the atmospheric rivers in the high 80s, 90%, but on a year-to-year basis, we try to, our goal is always to try to get the hazard mitigation out, or the hazard mitigation out there, new capital projects. The hope would always be 80 to 90% capital projects to try to help prevent those disastrous situations that occur. But when we have the strong storms, 23, 24, it was probably in the 80 to 90% was storm response. Where we had to put, like Lower Mission Creek on the back burner to make sure we didn't run out of funds.
Okay. Well, thank you. Supervisor Hartman.
Yeah, Chair Capps, your question prompted another one. I had the opportunity, Director Sneddon showed me some images of, I don't know what you call it, a screen, a grate, something that's upstream to prevent flooding downstream. And I wonder if you could elaborate on that, and how much more widely can those be used? One, what happens is all this debris comes down, branches and all kinds of stuff, and then it gets trapped, and then that creates the flooding. And we had huge damage a few years back on Alamo Pintato that hurt some businesses. They've never really recovered. So the more we can kind of capture that upstream, and you had a very innovative example that worked terrifically. So I wonder if you could elaborate more on how that can be deployed elsewhere?
Sure. Supervisor Hartman, through the chair. We actually added the photo on the front screen of the presentation. That is on Alamo Pintato Creek up in the upper watershed. So what we do is we work closely with the federal and state partners on the bear and the work teams, who are the burn area assessment teams who go out. And what we do is we identify areas at risk, and when these are the appropriate mediation, we go out there and install them. So we are doing this more commonly. We did two of these, one on the upper watershed and then one farther down near 154. They have been proven to work very well.
But it's really only something you put in after some kind of a wildfire event. It's not something you would use typically, say, I mean, every place burns eventually. It seems up in the wild mountains, but you wouldn't, it would be within a year or two after a wildfire that could flow into a river.
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair. We actually got this one deployed about three months after the fire, so it was before the rainy season occurred. So we can implement them very quickly. I think between the design and getting them out to construction, it may have been four to five months. So we can deploy them quickly. Our debris basins come with them equipped already. We have many racks and, for example, around the road debris basin. The challenge of putting them, these two of these were on private property. So we had to work with the private property owners to try and minimize the impacts. That's why you don't see them spread out throughout the county.
There might be private property owners who would have an interest in this. I think that's something we might want to explore.
We'll continue to explore all the options we have to try and, you know, to avoid impacts as we had in 2324.
Sure. Well, so the real critical time is after a fire but before the rainy season, and that's when you would deploy these. And then, so you really wouldn't start looking for places and property owners until after the fire.
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for that. Are there any comments from the public on this item, Madam Clerk?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
All right, with that, if the board is ready, we can, recommended actions are A through D, and I can entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Lee. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, when you're ready, Madam Clerk, we'll move to item two, Fee Ordinance for Transportation Division.
Chair Capps and members of the board, departmental item number two is from the Public Works Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the adoption of our proposed fee ordinance for Public Works Transportation Division's Development Review and Plan Check Review Services.
Okay, when you're ready.
Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. My name is Mustafa Saji. I'm the Deputy Director for Transportation Division, and I'm joined by Will Robertson, who is going to present the proposed fees for our development review and plan check review efforts in the division. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As stated, my name is Will Robertson, Public Works Transportation, and we are here to talk about the proposed fee ordinance for development review and plan check. This will be replacing our current resolution that we do collect fees for plan check. And the goal of this ordinance is to reflect the board's desire for cost recovery policies that would ensure maximum reimbursement through user fees to offset the services to the maximum extent possible by law. This ordinance primarily is for, to address inflation changes. The last time we've updated our fees has been since 2006, so it's been quite some time. And the other goal is to realign the permit fee structures to be more in line with planning and development's current case files. Most of the case files in our current resolution just do not match anymore, so it's time to update that. The project milestones were to calculate the true cost of providing these fee-based services. Those could include things like making a case file, reviewing the intake materials, site visits, meetings, emails, all things that would be associated with any development review. The goal was also to analyze any additional fees that were necessary in order to provide services. An example of that would be under new case law, the affordable housing projects currently come in under what's called an HSG project, only require a land use permit. So all review under current transportation fees is done without reimbursement. Next would be to determine any adjustments that could be made to the fee calculations through various methods, older policies. We used to always do physical site visits. Most meetings were done in person. Now we can do virtual meetings, so we can take advantage of cost savings to the applicant through that. A lot of times, projects are simple enough that we can do a Google Earth site visit if it's simple enough. So the goal was to adjust the fees so we could reduce the cost of the applicant as much as possible. We then developed revenue projections based on those adjustments. So each project type had an associated time that was spent. This is a fixed fee program. It's also more of a hybrid where we can convert over to a deposit hourly at any time, whether or not we needed to reimburse the applicants for a shorter review period, or in the case of a more complicated project, we could actually take on a further deposit and bill accordingly. And then the next step would be to adopt the new fees, which we are presenting to you today. Project methodology, I kind of went over it in the previous slide. We identify the resources that are required again. Emails, meetings, each project type is completely different. We try to get an estimated average time spent on each project, and once we have that time, we apply the appropriate labor rate, and that gives us our cost per project type. We also went through the last four years of permit data to review what projects were taken in, multiplied that by the collected revenues to find out how much we were either above or over in our revenue. And if we were, in this case, as noted, we weren't at full cost recovery, so we made the proposed changes to come in line with the 100% cost recovery. Currently, transportation development fees are only capturing 23% of staff time. So the goal again of this ordinance is to come back in line with the full cost recovery policies. And with the recommended fees presented to you today, the cost recovery is estimated to be 100% with an estimated revenue of approximately $230,000. Today, we are here to present the project in front of you. The adoption and second reading is anticipated to be July 1st, and the ordinance would take place 30 days after. So Public Works Transportation recommends the actions presented in front of you, that you adopt them, and staff is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the board? Supervisor Hartman.
We have increasingly, from the state, mandates to have byright development for housing. And I understand, I think, what that means in general for planning and development, having objective standards and not a lot of discretion. I don't understand what that means for public works and roads. Is your discretion in any way limited? And for these kinds of projects, I assume you still have to do the same kind of review because it's so specific, but could you elaborate on that? Because I really don't know.
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair. The short answer is, yes, our discretion is limited, but we also have, our adopted standards primarily are objective standards. So although there has been some changes in the review process, it hasn't really changed what we require of those projects. There are some cases where the state has come in and said, based on, like SB 9, we cannot require off-site improvements. And the definition, we've talked to council on this one, what is the definition of off-site? And that can vary generally. If it's in front of the project and in the road right of way, that is an onsite. But if we don't own the land in front of it, it's considered off-site. So there's some gray areas here that have been challenging. Review times have also been crunched considerably, and if you miss certain timelines, then what does that mean? It means you can't ask for certain things later in the process. So yes, it has changed things considerably. Has it been detrimental to how we review projects? I wouldn't say it has. It's just been different.
Yeah, I guess, and thank you. That gives me at least a flavor. I was wondering, you know, given your fees, if somehow it's short-circuited and you have less time to review and more intensive review, or trying to just understand in light of the fee change, how these new changes in the law have affected your review process?
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair. It has changed our timelines considerably. It's a lot of pressure, but the county has implemented a Sella in the other departments to make a seamless review process for all the departments, and that seems to be helping applicants. We've been hearing from applicants that the county is being more responsive. They're getting better feedback, at least this is what I'm being told. They're getting better feedback earlier in the process, and they're getting clearer direction.
And has that been fully adopted in Public Works Transportation Review of Projects yet?
Supervisor Hartman, through the chair, yes, it has.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, thank you, Chair Capps. So help me understand when this is triggered for some projects, because some projects have transportation involved and some don't. So if I bring a permit to planning, how do I know whether it's going to have transportation involved and need to pay a fee versus a project that doesn't?
Supervisor Nelson, through the chair. Anything that is on Attachment C as a case type, that will be subject to the fixed fee. Now, because this is a hybrid ordinance, at any time, if an applicant were to approach us and say, I really feel that your fee is out of line, let's say a new ag structure, for example, if it's a barn, obviously, transportation is, an ag structure on there is very vague. A new barn would require very little time, if not no time. Because this is an ordinance, we can't waive the fee, but what we could do is convert that over to a deposit hourly, start billing for the time that we do spend. Obviously, there's still going to be a slight review. We still have to make a case. We still have to hear it at subdivision review committee. But anything after that, we could refund the difference back to the applicant. On the flip side of that, it would be if any project was exceeding the fixed fee, we could also collect a deposit and bill them accordingly so we would not later on have to have other projects. I've heard the statement that some projects are covering the costs of other projects, if they're small or if they're large. In this case, each project would be carrying its own weight.
So then we'll be back to an hourly at that point?
I'm sorry.
So then we'd be back to an hourly rate at that point? So if it's below the, kind of happened in both ways, which, and I guess my question on that is who makes that decision on whether it's going to be an exceed amount or a less than amount?
Supervisor Nelson, through the chair. So in general, the fixed fee is what would apply. It would be for extreme cases that we would exercise going to deposit hourly. And the reason to do that, a good example would be, let's say there's a small project that I think our smallest review time is two and a half hours. If we were to convert that over to deposit hourly, then there's an inefficiency that's going to be baked in for tracking time, which could add probably 20% to the cost of that permit, which would actually make it more expensive than doing the fixed fee. So it's, there's no preference. Well, the preference from a staff of one doing all development review for transportation to manage hourly, deposit hourly is more time-consuming than to do a fixed fee. But I think there's inefficiencies in both. And you could look at it both ways.
Can you put up Attachment C there for a minute then, because I want to better understand? Page one.
Supervisor Nelson, I don't believe we have the attachments in the PowerPoint.
Did you just have it there at the? Thank you. So I guess here's my question, is it says that, you know, anything that would touch transportation would, you know, which all these permits do, like you said, an ag structure, right, an LUP. But we, in the permits type per year that you have on there, let's just say land use permit, let's pick that out in the fee study. You know, we only did 20 a year, basically, over the last four years that had review, when we did far more LUPs in the county than that. So I'm trying to understand how that works. So.
Supervisor Nelson, through the chair. So historically, currently, we do not collect a fee for a land use permit. And this goes back to my comment about realigning with planning and development's permit types. So the most common land use permit that we're aware of is a single-family home. A single-family home would not, would not even to this point, under the new ordinance, require review by transportation at the development review stage. However, that same land use permit would move forward and be recommended for, let's say, an encroachment permit for a new driveway. And then there's separate fee ordinance would cover any review time from the permit section for an encroachment permit. The problem we're having now is that, under state law, something like the Carrot Project or Georgie or even Rice Ranch comes in as a land use permit with an associated, it's called an HSG housing. So we currently don't collect fees for a land use permit. So any time spent currently, if this does not get adopted on Rice Ranch, there is zero reimbursement back to the county for staff time on it. And that goes for any large state-mandated housing project. What's before you is we would collect a land use permit fee, but something like that. So going back to the example of, could we convert this over to deposit hourly? Something that large, we obviously know that that land use permit fee would not cover Rice Ranch, and we would have to convert that over to deposit hourly.
So, but the study is based on interactions that you do over a year, right, on land use permits?
Over the last four years, correct.
Right, so you're not touching more than 20 LUPs a year? And more than two pre-apps a year?
Supervisor Nelson, through the chair, that is correct because of the way that planning and development transfers land use permits over to transportation for review.
So it's only if they transferred over to you? And it's minimal. It's rarely that that happens. Because that's what I'm trying to understand. Because if you end up touching every LUP, your revenue numbers are going to be way off of this, right? If you end up reviewing, you know, 100 LUPs, which is totally reasonable in our county. I mean, there's well over 100 LUPs that get processed a year. These numbers don't work. And so that's what I'm trying to get my brain wrapped around this. And so I guess it's a minimal scope that you guys are engaged in?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair. Yes, so I had this conversation yesterday with planning and development. There are screening criteria that we implement with. Other departments have, we have very mild screening criteria with PND on what we would like to see. So for instance, a land use permit for gated access is one that we tell planning and development. If there's a gate, we need to see it because it can cause problems. Do we need to see all land use permits? Absolutely not. So it would be based on the screening criteria that we define to planning and development.
Do we have that in writing yet?
We currently do not have that in writing, but we have been asked to do so.
Okay, because I think that's really important here. Because I think, you know, a lot of things don't come to you because, hey, we're not getting paid. It's not really something we want to be reviewing. But now we're going to get paid. So it's actually going to have some wrong incentives if you think about it from the perspective of a development review. Where, hey, now we have a revenue source to charge against. So we're going to be able to now take in more business, which is ultimately going to cost the taxpayers more to develop projects. And, you know, this board has been long committed to trying to lower the cost and make it easier and simpler. And what I'm seeing here, and I'm afraid of, is this is going to become a revenue source. You know, not, I wouldn't say that people would mean to abuse it, but I think it'd be natural to use it in that source that we haven't. So I think that where right now, and again, this is why I think that, you know, fees should be partially borne by the board and by the general taxpayers as well as applicants. Because then there's a shared benefit here. And, you know, you want to make sure you're reviewing things that are really benefiting the general public because you're spending both all of our taxpayer dollars and you as the applicant's dollars. And that's why I've been saying this about planning and other environmental health fees. I think that we all have a duty to part of that, those cost controls. And I think once we make it all on the applicants, then the motivation for all of us starts to go down. So that's my concern there. What about projects that have multiple layers of permits? So there's a lot of projects that have, you know, a zoning development plan. They have LUPs underneath there. There's zoning clearances. So how does that all work?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair. Really quick, I want to touch on what you said previously. And the department is in 100% agreement with you. The goal of this department is to be the most efficient as possible and to streamline costs for applicants. So not only that, is pretty much a staff of one. If we were to have to look at every land use permit, it just would make my life miserable. So I do understand what you're saying. And we commit to reducing costs to applicants as much as possible. To answer your next question, what happens when you have layered permits? As we have done in the past, layered permits, one fee is applied to the project and that would be the most expensive or the highest classification of the case. So you can have a development permit with a conditional use permit. Sometimes with a lot line adjustment, we would just charge the development permit fee.
Okay. I also saw in the ordinance that there's a $2,000 appeal fee in there, the ordinance?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair. That is correct. That was modeled after, so this ordinance was modeled after previous ordinances, more specifically, the one that was done by the surveyor two years ago. And so that was copied language because it worked for them.
So I'm concerned about that number as well. Just because I know that our appeal fee on planning side is well below that. And we've been told that we need to keep that low for many reasons. And so I'm just, I guess I'm concerned about that number, especially comparative to our planning and development side. Because it seems like if we're charging $2,000 to appeal just a decision by, on the traffic side, you know, it's far more substantial on the planning side. And we had to keep that down. Maybe we should be looking at raising it on the planning side. I think I've been an advocate for that for some time. But I think this should be, trying to understand why we can have so high on one, but not the other.
Supervisor Nelson through the chair. As Will said, it is modeled after our previous ordinances that have gone. But I will say that it's very rare that this would come up. We make a point of working with applicants. And we've been through, I mean, we were just working on one last week, I think, or two weeks ago on this, that we almost always can come to some agreement on how the fees are going to be charged and try to have this built-in hybrid method where we can be flexible and make sure that we're just reflecting that cost to actually do the work and not more than that.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. I don't know if we're in deliberations yet, if anybody else has other questions?
No, we can check. Any other questions from the board? Doesn't look as though there are any. Any requests to speak from the public? Madam Clerk?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Okay, Supervisor Nelson.
Yeah, thank you Chair Capps. Obviously, I have some concerns still here. And so, you know, for me, and I want to make sure that Public Works understands that you guys are some of the best bang for a buck in the entire county. So I'm not trying to pick on your department. This is actually a philosophical argument that I've been making for quite some time. I'm trying to be consistent on that. So I can't support this at this point. You know, it's a 400% increase in fees because we go from 23% to 100%. That's, you know, that's too high for me. I think that we should have a blend there. I appreciate the flexibility in the hourly versus on the fixed fee determination. I think that's great. I'm glad that that's built into there. That gives me a little less concern. Because I do know how well you guys are stewards of your fee dollars that you guys receive. So I can't support this at this time. I would like to see the screening tool, though, that's going to be used. Because I think that's going to be a really important piece to this. Because I think, you know, again, without that screening tool, there's a chance that this could be abused. I also think that after this, if the board decides to move forward, that I think we should look at this a year into it to see whether the actual work and the fees balance out. Because I think, I'm afraid that it might go higher and it's something that should be looked at. So today, I can't support this. I understand why it's before us. I understand the direction the board has made on full cost recovery. And so I don't fault the department for bringing this to us. It's absolutely within alignment of what the county's asked you to do. It's just something that I'm struggling with, especially as we look at the fee load overall. You know, because at some point, the other downside of fees, like, you know, there's a $600 fee now for building a fence. And, you know, people just won't go get the permit. You know, and that's what I'm afraid of. That's also going to happen too. And so you got to balance that out. You know, sometimes the fee can be as much as the project. And I don't think that's what we want to do. But I think that's one of those worries that happens when we go down this pathway towards full cost recovery. And I think the other thing that, you know, you guys should also be looking at is what is other jurisdictions charging for the similar actions? You know, I don't know if that was ever, I didn't see that as part of the report. I had enough that I wasn't in agreement with not to go down that route. But, you know, some of those fees might be considerably higher. And when you stack them with the planning fees and the environmental health fees, our fee load becomes pretty hefty. And I think that's something that we need to get our arms around as a board and the county in the future. If we hope to stimulate, you know, businesses and development and housing.
I appreciate that Supervisor Nelson. I did have a question, not really for this, but just how fees get increased in general? The fact that this wasn't since 2006, but how come some are annual? But that's more of a broad question, not necessarily for you three. So anyway, with that, I think we're ready for a motion. I understand you won't be supporting it, but so we can do a roll call vote. Does another supervisor like to make the motion?
So I would move A through C on today's board letter with direction that they come back, Public Works come back in a year and report on progress and also give us some benchmark county comparisons.
One second.
Okay, thank you so much. May we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Supervisor Lavignino. Supervisor Lee.
Aye.
Supervisor Hartman.
Aye.
Supervisor Nelson.
No.
Chair Capps.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, thank you so much to our Public Works team. We will move on to item number three, which is Emergency Shelters Zoning Ordinance with Director Plowman.
Chair Capps and members of the board, departmental item number three is from the Planning and Development Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding emergency shelters zoning ordinance amendments, case numbers 24ORD 21 and 24ORD 22 to comply with new state laws and implement Program 9 of the Chapter 5 of the 2023 through 2031 Housing Element Update.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Today, we're bringing back an item that was a requirement out of our Housing Element Update. I have Alan Bell, our supervising planner, and Lila Spring, new planner three in our department. And Lila will be making the presentation today.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. As Lisa said, my name is Lila Spring and I am here to present the Emergency Shelters Zoning Ordinance Amendments. I also wanted to just let you know that we have Jet Black Meritz, the county CSD's homelessness assistance program manager, with us to answer any questions today as well. So first, to provide a bit of background on why we are here today. In the last few years, the state has passed new laws that update the requirements for jurisdictions regarding emergency shelters. First, jurisdictions are required to demonstrate that they have sufficient emergency shelter capacity to accommodate the point in time count population of unhoused individuals throughout the 2023 to 2031 housing element cycle. If the county does not have sufficient capacity, then the state requires that some zones be modified to allow emergency shelters ministerially. Second, jurisdictions may apply up to eight specific objective standards to new emergency shelters. And third, the state updated definitions of low barrier navigation center and emergency shelter. In addition, Program 9 of the county's 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Update directs the county to amend its zoning ordinances in order to comply with these new state laws. Staff determine that the existing emergency shelter capacity within the county's jurisdiction is sufficient to shelter the number of unhoused individuals identified in the 2024 point in time count. Therefore, staff recommends relying on its existing emergency shelter capacity to meet state law for the time being. Staff proposes to amend the county's Land Use and Development Code and Coastal Zoning Ordinance to add four objective standards for new emergency shelters, as well as to amend the definitions of emergency shelter and low barrier navigation center in order to align with state law, or state changes, rather. Now, to provide a bit of additional detail on the existing emergency shelter capacity, this chart shows the point in time count for 2020 to 2024 for the unincorporated county, as well as subtotals for the North County and the South County. As you can see, the total for 2024 is 357 individuals. This number changed from the original board letter and is described in this board letter as a discrepancy in the point in time count. And I just want to be clear that the discrepancy was in staff's interpretation of the count, not the count itself. And specifically, the numbers for Isla Vista were mistakenly not included in the total, and that has been corrected here. Staff from Planning and Development and County CSD created an inventory of emergency shelters that are within the county's jurisdiction. This table includes both sites, emergency shelters that are located on sites in the unincorporated county, as well as on county-owned sites within incorporated cities. So the first six of these on the list are county-owned sites. And the seventh is a privately owned site within the unincorporated county. The total of seven shelters operate on a year-round basis and provide a total of 365 beds, which is eight more than the 2024 point in time count. However, the contracts for Santa Barbara Street Village, which was previously called Dignity Moves, as well as Hope Village and La Posada are slated to terminate prior to the end of the current housing element cycle. So it is possible that beginning in mid-2027, there may be insufficient emergency shelter capacity. And this could worsen in 2028 and in 2029. Given the length of time between now and early 2027, staff does not, and the uncertainty of what might happen during that time, staff does not recommend that we address this potential shortfall now, but rather that the board reconsider this issue in early 2027. And if there is an actual or anticipated shortfall at that time, to take one or more of the following actions. One would be to identify county-owned sites for emergency shelters. Another would be to extend the existing contracts for emergency shelters. And another would be to amend the county's zoning codes to allow emergency shelters in some zones with a ministerial permit. Now, to provide a bit more detail on the proposed amendments in the inland and coastal zones, zoning codes. So state law allows the county to apply up to eight specific objective standards to new emergency shelters. And staff propose to apply the following four. One, sufficient parking, which means one parking space per each six beds, as well as one per each employee. And two, an interior or exterior waiting slash client intake area that is screened from public view. Three, onsite management, which means at least one staff person onsite during operating hours, as well as a 24-hour emergency contact person. And four, a distance of at least 300 feet between emergency shelters. Staff does not propose to apply the other four optional standards for emergency shelters. And this is based on CSD staff's recommendations, as well as the determination that these standards were generally redundant to existing counting codes. Staff also proposes to update the definition of emergency shelter to include interim interventions. So this is navigation centers, bridge housing, and respite or recuperative care. And to update the definition of low barrier navigation center to add that these, or to clarify that these may be non-congregate, meaning separate quarters for occupants, and that they may be relocatable. These zoning ordinance amendments are exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. And this is pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15061B3 for having no possibility of significant effect. And this is because these ordinances, these amendments, excuse me, do not facilitate any new development. In addition, the local coastal program amendment is exempt under Section 15265. And that covers the coastal zoning ordinance amendments before you today. Staff recommends that the board take the actions identified on pages one and two of the board letter and summarized on this slide. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spring. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, thank you Chair Capps. On the objective standards, those four, like parking and, you know, intake and all that, that kind of limits what could probably happen in a residential area. Is that probably true? I mean, it could work on some sites, but not others, right? That's the whole idea behind objective standards?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair. Yeah, the way the law is set up is they, like with some other similar laws that we're dealing with for residential uses where they require ministerial review objective standards. That's essentially what's happened with emergency shelters. So the idea is, is that they would not be subject to discretionary review or approval. They would be subject to the objective standards that we've listed in this ordinance, as well as any objective standards that apply to other residential uses in that particular zone.
So I guess, help me. So what would be the parking requirements for, let's say, an emergency shelter in a residential zone?
We list those as, in the ordinance amendment. So the specific requirements for parking for an emergency shelter would be one space per six beds, and then one space per employee for a new emergency shelter.
Okay, so if the house has four parking spots, then you could have one employee and 18 people staying there?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any limits on amount of people that could be living in a residential, rezoned property?
Yeah, Supervisor Nelson through the chair. We, we did look at that, but, and the law does allow you to set some limits. Like, you can limit the number of individuals, that is, the number of beds. You can also eliminate, you can also regulate the length of stay. But we felt that the size of the property and the size of the structure is really going to be the limiting factor. And rather than having us spend time monitoring the number of individuals in a particular facility or monitoring the length of stay, we opted not to include those. The thought was, is that the permitted structure is for an emergency shelter, and for example, the length of stay isn't going to change the particular land use that's occurring. So we wanted to really kind of minimize staff and the county's role in monitoring and trying to enforcing things such as length of stay.
I think monitoring is one piece of it, but also it's kind of a gatekeeper as well, right? You know, if you limit the amount of people there, then, you know, maybe somebody doesn't do a residence that has 30 people in that neighborhood because they're, know it's not legal to get a ministerial permit there. So kind of having a limiting, you know, cap might be something that might be helpful. You know, because I, I see this as, you know, this is a residential zone, right? So people have an expectation that, you know, it's a residence. And I think it happens maybe, I know it happens in my district and it happens in some of your others, but you know, there's a lot of the group homes that will come in. And, and, you know, one of the big things that I always am advocating for is for, when I work with the group home, to try to make it compatible with its neighbors, is like, you know, let's make, you know, you are a neighbor, so let's have the same type of controls as a neighborhood. Because I think when people move into a neighborhood, they have a reasonable expectation that it stays, you know, in a more residential component. But when there's a lot of people that, you know, move in, you know, that kind of turns into something else. And, you know, the other challenge with residential properties, with emergency shelters, is there's, sometimes these are in very suburban areas, but not a lot of services around either. So that's one of the other challenges. You know, and these may be attractive locations that put shelters in because they might not cost a lot, but they're further away from services, and they potentially could disrupt neighborhoods. And, and then those, our constituents are going to come back to us and go, how did this happen? And then, you know, we're going to find out that we, we could have put some controls in place, but we maybe did not. And so that's why I think putting controls in place are really helpful for us to be able to answer our constituents saying, hey, no, this is, we wanted to keep it residential, so we limited how many people could be there by, you know, square footage or bedrooms. We, we also, you know, I think an objective standards would maybe even having some type of, you know, noise, you know, type of limitations as part of a project of an emergency shelter moved into a neighborhood. You know, those are some of the challenges that I've, I've seen with some of the group homes that could make this a little bit more compatible. And I know you guys don't want to monitor it, but I also want to make sure that bad projects or projects that are incompatible don't get through the door in the first place. And that's why I think it's important to have maybe a couple more objective standards here. So, you know, I would support something that would add to that, as well as, you know, if we can keep, and I don't know the number. I mean, I'm open to what the number could be, but I think having either a cap or a square footage or whatnot, you know. I'm familiar with a lot of this through the H2A program. We have, you know, some caps of that, and that's, that's a pretty big number that still fits in a house, housing unit. I think it's almost 50 square foot per individual of, you know, habitable area. And I don't know if that, that's how these are done in other jurisdictions. And then I also would think that it'd be really important to also have potentially like some quiet hours standard, as well as part of a emergency shelter that happened in a residential zone. Because I think that's going to be, again, we're, we're going to hear to get the phone calls. And I would rather it be below, you know, a certain standard would be helpful.
Supervisor Nelson through the chair. Just a couple of things to comment on. One is, we're not proposing to allow emergency shelters in any zones where they're not currently allowed. So we're not making any changes there. That was part of our initial thought, was to expand it. But once we looked into our current capacity, we felt that wasn't necessary. Secondly, the way the new law is written, there are eight objective development standards that can be applied. We can't apply standards beyond those, except for other objective standards that apply to residential uses. So for example, when you look at the list of eight, it does allow jurisdictions to regulate the maximum number of beds or persons permitted to be served nightly by the facility. But it doesn't have any provisions, for example, about noise. That's not one of the, one of the standards we can use. So we have to be very careful in terms of looking at the eight objective standards that we can apply if your board chooses to go beyond what we've recommended in the draft ordinance.
Mr. Bell, where are those eight standards? Are they in the staff report?
On page five of the staff report, under definitions and objective standards, we list the four standards that we're applying. But we did not list the four that we did not apply. But I have the government code in front of me, and I can read those four if that would be helpful.
Yeah, can you give them to me?
Okay, the first one is the maximum number of beds or persons permitted to be served nightly by the facility. We did not include that. Length of stay, we did not recommend including that. Lighting, we did not include. Security during hours that the emergency shelter is in operation. That's the fourth one that we did not include directly.
So, you know, I know that three of those four, I'd probably like to, you know, I know our lighting standards now are probably more restrictive, pretty darn restrictive. So I can't imagine those getting any more restrictive than they already are. But I would definitely be interested, you know, I think what we're doing right now is fine. But I do think that I would like to see us come back with those other three objective standards to further make sure that the bar, if you're, if it's going to come into residential zone, is, is high enough because, to minimize conflict. Because I think there's potential conflict here. And I think, you know, security, and just requiring security alone might be enough to help people channel to projects that are a little bit more appropriately cited. So that's where I'm, again, I can support this, but I also would want to direct to come back with those other three.
Yeah, Chair Nelson through the, through the chair. We may, we do have CSD, a representative, we worked very closely with CSD, albeit staff that was here previously, such as Kim Albers, Emily Allen. So we did base our recommendations somewhat on their experiences with emergency shelters. So it may be helpful to have them comment if that, if you feel that would be helpful.
Would you like them to comment now? Okay, Supervisor Hartman.
Oh, well, I appreciate the question, excuse me. And I think the security one in particular is, is something that would be important for neighborhood compatibility. My, my question, I'm just, you know, we're, we're working together regionally to try to address our issues of our unhoused neighbors. And I understand that we're counting the point-in-time count within the county unincorporated area. What I don't quite understand is how we allocate the beds. Because both city and county are using some of these facilities. So could you explain that to me?
Supervisor Hartman through the chair. So the way the state law is written, when we look at our current capacity, it allows us to look at sites that are within the unincorporated portion of the county. But it also allows us to look at sites that are essentially owned or within the county's jurisdiction. So we do have some sites, for example, up in North County and Santa Maria. And we have a site here, just a few blocks from us, within the city. So we are allowed to, essentially, the county is allowed to take credit and count those as existing and apply those toward meeting our point-in-time count.
I, I understand that. I guess, what, what happens with the city of Santa Maria or the city of Lompoc? Who's, I mean, who, who counts, who gets to, I assume they have to go through this process as well? It's not just the county? And, and so, maybe Director Armus, if you, if I'm making my question clear, maybe you can help me out.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor Hartman through the chair. Jesus Armus, Community Services Director, and of course, Jet is available also to share her knowledge. Just a point of clarification, when we think about emergency shelters, I'm not familiar with any shelter that has been proposed by the private sector. So effectively, a public sector agency is the one that's making a determination of what's an appropriate application, use, and the like. So there is that overarching safeguard to a certain degree. As to the reservation of beds, we typically will not allocate, allocate beds to jurisdiction. We do have contracts with service providers who in turn may have received some funding from, excuse me, from an agency, and therefore have some allocation of space or through another county department. So for example, Behavioral Wellness has commissioned a number of beds in various facilities. And so we approach it that way. As to the, the recognition of the incorporated cities, I'm not conversant on that. I would really defer to, to PND on how they would receive allocations or credits for this basis.
Sure, well, I, have I made my question clear? I mean, I think we were looking at the homeless population in unincorporated, and we're counting all the beds that the county has. I'm just wondering, are the cities double counting? Are they using some of our beds in, when they're going before their city councils, like you're coming before us? How do we make sure that that's, that there isn't double counting going on?
That's a, Supervisor Hartman, that's, that's a point that we'll need to clarify and look into more fully because obviously you want to avoid any ambiguity on that point and, and double counting, as you suggest. But it also underscores something that we convey to you when we discuss the pit count, and that is the importance of the, of the cities and the county working together, particularly since, as the data indicated, better than 80% of the, of the pit count was in cities. So we obviously need to do a lot more work on that front.
Right, and I don't think that point is fully reflected in, in this. Okay.
If I, Chair Capps, thank you. And I wanted to respond to Supervisor Hartman, because I think what this law does is pits a lot of more responsibility on the, on the cities to find these locations. You know, the county has shoulder the big part of the burden. We have the little, the least amount of, of unsheltered, but we've also invested the most in, in beds. And so those jurisdictions that continue to have large issues of unsheltered and haven't invested in beds are going to have to change their zoning to potentially allow, you know, more and more emergency shelters in more and more zones. And so I think, you know, it's, that's what the state's trying to do. And, and I think what we're hearing here is, hey, the county, you guys have done a good job, is what, you know, and I, maybe I should just back off and take the win.
Why do that?
Why do that? To make the meeting shorter. So, you know, that's what I see here versus what, you know, I think cities, you know, who often just turn to us and say, hey, we need county to solve this problem. That's often a problem that there are, you know, most immediately impacts them.
Yeah, Supervisor Hartman.
And, and if I may piggyback on that, then they shouldn't be counting the beds that we've provided. That, that, hence the double counting, so just want to underscore that.
I mean, I, if I can jump in and ask about that specifically, what, if we change these zoning ordinance, how does that translate with city zoning? I don't, I just don't know how that, that coordination works. I know, at least with here, here in the city of Santa Barbara, there's, there's, it seems to be a fair amount of coordination. But in other places, how does that work? So we make these changes here, what does that mean for a shelter in another city where, as has been stated, 85% of the homeless population lives?
Madam Chair, members of the board, so our changes affect only our jurisdiction and the, and the sites that we own in another jurisdiction. So they will have their own rules and regulations that will dictate how they develop their emergency shelters.
And if we own, how do we own a site, just to be, I think I know, but if we own a site in a city, it's because it's county land?
That's correct.
And how many ballpark would there be of those?
So I think on, in the PowerPoint, we had a list of emergency shelters, and most of them are actually in other jurisdictions on county-owned land.
Okay.
Yeah. And one, one thing I wanted to point out too is currently, emergency shelters are not allowed in our residential zones. They are allowed in other zones that allow residential uses. So the, the concerns that we were discussing earlier, I, I think, are addressed by that particular issue.
Okay.
Thank you, I didn't see that in the presentations, I wasn't, wasn't questioned.
Yeah, it wasn't clear in our staff report, and then, so I'm sorry about that.
So, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
But I do think security is an issue for any surrounding neighbor, business or others.
And maybe I'll pose that as a question, was that just not included because it's implied? I mean, I know from experience with the ones in my district, security is just, there's no way that that would, a project would exist without security. So are we not discussing it because it's a foregone conclusion that security would be implied, part of the project?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that is my expectation, but I'd like to have Director Armus to respond to that.
Chair Capps, as, as indicated, all the emergency shelters are government-funded and government-supported. And as we've indicated in the past, we've made certain to provide that level of oversight and security. So it's already addressed, it's implicit, but I don't know that there's a particular harm in identifying that as a standard.
Okay.
If the board is interested, Madam Chair, in moving forward with adding that objective standard, rather than coming back, I would like to take a break or trail this to the end of the hearing so that we could come back with a, an addition.
Sure. Well, if I can ask another couple of questions, I, I would be, that's fine. I mean, I think what we're, this is a zoning conversation, but what we're really talking about people and trying to find the right balance between making the barriers less to have shelters, which we need, but also making sure we protect neighbors. And, and so I had a couple of questions that haven't yet been addressed because we've done such a great job as a board, decisions made prior to me joining, about using county land. And really, that's, we've, we've found a, a real secret sauce in terms of Dignity Moves and that partnership, and, and had, have seen so much success. So I noted that we're not considering other county land until 2027, which I appreciate thought has gone into that. But with this sort of sunsetting of some of our county projects, I just wanted to make, I just want to hear the rationale for that because I don't want to make, I don't want to lose an opportunity. So if you could just explain why, why we're waiting till 2027 to even start looking about it. And then our next board item has to do with a master plan for a huge county area. So I just want to understand why we're not going there now. Mr. Bell?
Yes, Supervisor Capps. When we looked at this, the standard was whether or not we could meet our homeless count with existing facilities. And, and we showed through the existing facilities that we can meet that count. As we move forward, some of these facilities that are under contract by the county, including Santa Barbara, Street Village, will sunset. And our rationale for not looking further right now is, one, we meet the standards, but things change very rapidly in circumstances. In fact, just a few weeks ago, you extended the contract for Santa Barbara Street for two years.
Yeah.
So we just couldn't feel like we could predict what's going to, what our situation is going to be in two or two and a half years. We may add more facilities, we may lose some, but we felt we're good for right now, so let's keep on track. And then we'll revisit this approximately six months before the expiration of the first current contract will expire, which will allow of the first current contract will expire, which will allow us to reassess the situation and determine whether we need to begin planning for additional shelters. That is, whether we're going to have a shortfall as a result of some of the contracts expiring.
Supervisor, if I may, Chair Capps and other board members, you also have to remember, you know, this is a great model that we're using.
Yes.
We love to use it in other places, but it is almost $2 million annually to fund Hope Village, and a million and a half annually for Santa Maria. So these sites, and we are largely state-funded, and we know the state is having difficulty in continuing their homeless, homeless funding to counties and cities. So part of the calculation also is working with CSD about what revenues are going to be coming in for us to either do similar developments, or even continue these to the extent that we have. We don't have funding identified to keep some of them in place for the next couple, till the end, and that's contributing to our deficit. So it's not a lack of wanting, I think it's a lack of funding as well.
I understand. Okay. Well, let's see, let's see if there's any public comment, and then we can go back to deliberation. Madam Clerk?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Okay. Well, since it's been teed up, I think the security, just given a few things that have been in the news lately, I think even though it is implied, I think it would be helpful to just spell it out. It doesn't sound like it's even any additional work, per se, but I would agree with that direction. And so, if we want to, we can trail this till the end of the hearing. Does that sound good?
It's up to the board's discretion. I think, if we could probably put something together in the next 10 minutes, but if you want to move on to the next item, we can come back.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. What sort of, County Council, what sort of, would you just move on? Do we need a motion to move on?
Madam Chair, so I was just, I was a little confused. Are we taking the 10 minutes, or are you going to, we're going to come back?
We're going to, I would prefer to just move on to the next item, and then...
We don't need to take any action.
Okay. Thank you. So we will move to item number four, which is the Cali Real Master Plan. If everyone's good with that? Yeah, it's 11 o'clock. Great. Did we need a real break? Because we took a five-minute break. Madam Clerk? For, okay. So we will take another short break, and come back for item four, just to be clear.
Okay, and we are back with departmental item number four, Madam Clerk.
Chair Capps and members of the Board, departmental item number four is from the General Services Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Cali Real Campus Master Plan, County Project Number 8805, Cali Real Campus Design and Development Standards, County Project Number 23014, and final environmental impact report for the Cali Real Campus Master Plan, County Project Number 21010, and this is in the Second District.
Director Largo, Chris.
Good morning, Chair Capps and Supervisors. I'm Kirk Lardquist, Director of General Services. With me today briefing, I have Ashton Ellis, who's Project Manager for the Cali Real Master Plan, part of Capital General Services, and Michael Milroy of Ultra Systems Environmental Incorporated, who will brief the environmental impact report portion of our brief this morning. So excited to bring the master plan back to the Board. It's been a couple of years since we've been here to discuss this. A very exciting plan, part of what enticed me to apply for this position. I had the good fortune in the Navy to work on multiple master plans and actually build out a couple of campuses, the Navy's boot camp in Great Lakes, Illinois, and then the Naval Seals, Navy Seals compound down in Coronado. So exciting. So we will kick this off and discuss the master plan. I guess I got the slides here. So we'll talk about the master plan itself, and then we'll talk about design and development standards, how we get kind of a congruent campus-like feel. And then finally, we'll talk about the environmental impact report that's been ongoing for the past two years. So General Services awarded a contract back in 2019 to Gensler, who pulled together this master plan, what was supposed to be a year and a half, obviously got a little delayed due to the COVID pandemic in 2020, and the project ended up taking about three years to finally get to conclusion. It was brought to the Board in 2022 as a concept, which was approved as a concept at the time. And then we kicked off in March of 2023 with the environmental impact report with Ultra Systems. And we've had multiple public engagements on that, and Michael will brief more on that in a moment. So the strategic vision, or the campus plan is a strategic vision of what we want to do in the future, to look at development opportunities, how do we take an old campus that's been around for over 100 years, modernize it, get rid of outdated, underutilized facilities, energy inefficient, and create, you know, modern, more useful-type facilities for our campus. So part of what Gensler did is they looked at a lot of data, did some facility conditions, looked at market research, conducted multiple interviews with lots of different departments, looked at growth forecasting, and then studied historical as well. And obviously, the COVID pandemic has kind of changed the way we do work, and so we had to pivot a little bit as we went along. So the goal is, you know, over the next 30 years, take care of campus recapitalization. And on a subsequent slide, you'll see, so we have 18 total projects over seven different phases. The phases are conceptual at this point of how we can execute all these if given the money. Each project would be developed, we'd hire, you know, an A and E firm to help us build them out and then do construction. Again, this is today, we're not looking for funding, we're not asking that the Board commit to the funding at this point. We realize it's a very large bill, and having sat through budget hearings last week, I recognize the state of the budget and the outlook for the next few years. But this is a roadmap for the future of what we can do for the campus, and so it's important that we approve a plan and approve this EIR so that in the future, given money, we could execute that. You know, as far as the funding, again, recognizing the county's budget, but there are other opportunities out there through grants, and we specifically had applied for the Behavioral Health Continuum and Infrastructure Program through the state. Unfortunately, we were not awarded any grant money this cycle, and we'll continue to go after that in subsequent cycles. But, you know, certainly keeping an eye out for unique funding opportunities that we could realize this campus. So here were the five goals that we laid out during the master plan itself. So eliminating buildings beyond their useful lives. So again, we've got a 100-year-old hospital that our psychiatric health facility is in right now, among other facilities. We have buildings that are no longer being used for what they were originally designed for, and so I'd say they're not as efficient as they can be. Certainly, I mentioned that energy is a challenge. We've got outdated systems, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. A lot of buildings don't even have air conditioning. The goal would be to make a one-stop service center for both health and human services and permitting. So this would allow county constituents, one basic place to come to in the South County to take care of their needs, whether it's, you know, public health or permitting, et cetera. Recognizing departmental synergies, and you'll see here on the next slide when I talk to the various campuses within the campus of how we can tie things together. And then obviously Renew 22 was going on at the same time, and so aligning the campus with our renew initiatives, and then maximizing current vacant space, either in underutilized buildings or vacant land. And again, kind of the face of how we work now has changed, given hybrid work. And so I think going forward, we can utilize some different approaches there, too. So I know this is a very busy slide, but I just wanted to kind of walk you through the five different distinct areas of the campus. And I'll start on the south there with the Community Services Campus. So this is south of the 101, sandwiched between Hollister Avenue and the 101. And so Community Services, we've got a few different things there, but specifically, you've got the Ballfields, the Ben Page Youth Center. We have a fire station, the Coroner's Facility, and it's the site of the former Juvenile Hall. And you'll see those little red asterisks, those are identified as future areas for housing and part of the housing element. And so currently at the Juvenile Hall, obviously, we heard earlier today about the La Posada Dignity Moves Site is right there now, but in the future, envisioning some housing as well. As we move to the other side of the 101, kind of the core center of the campus here, you've got two different things going on, you've got the Health and Government Center. So this would be County Health, the B Well Facilities, Public Health, sorry, the Social Services, and then eventually potentially bring everything from the downtown campus over to there as well. And that's the new government building shown as Phase 7B. And then moving to the right there is the, in yellow, is the Main Jail Complex. And so the Sheriff's Headquarters would get a renovation. And then moving kind of northerly is the County Yards Campus, so municipal services, public works, and general services, where we have our vehicle fleets and lay-down yards. And then on the north side of Cathedral Oaks is our Public Safety Campus. Our Emergency Operations Center is up there and Fire Headquarters. So those are the five distinct areas. Again, the phasing strategy is conceptual at this point, but we recognize the peach-colored blocks on here, and they are just that, they're blocks. They're not necessarily built out at this point, they're just concepts of what could be there. But they sit on top of buildings that are existing. So in order to then build them out, we have to leapfrog some of these other buildings. And so we'll have to build out some temporary space, specifically as we were looking at Phase 1A here, and as we went through the B-CHIP process for behavioral wellness and the potential new puff. You know, we've got Employee University in that parking lot, Ag is in there, and Environmental Health. So we would have to find them new spots, assuming that funding had come through. So again, this is a potential phasing strategy. And as funding is realized, we would then have to actually execute and figure that out. So with that, we're going to transition over to design standards with Ashton Ellis.
Thank you, Kirk. Chair Capps and Supervisors, following this master plan process, General Services saw a need to develop standards to guide the future design and development decisions on the Cali Real Campus. The standards aim to create a more consistent and cohesive planning, design, and development process for design teams, contractors, project managers, stakeholders, and future, as future projects become realized on the campus. To build a foundation for what the county is striving to achieve through these design and development standards, five goals were established. Embrace the natural topography and ecology of the site. So really, just not thinking about the design of the building, but how it fits into the side itself. Cultivate a cohesive image for the campus, kind of define what that aesthetic looks like for the campus. Promote a welcoming experience. Consider how the use of architecture, site design, wayfinding, and signage can help define the experience for the campus. Ensure flexibility on the campus. These standards need to be just as relevant in 30 years as they do today. So including flexibility is essential to being able to have this campus evolve over time. And then finally, embrace the diverse and critical functions of the campus. We must consider what the needs are from the built environment for each of the various functions that are on this campus. As the project team brainstormed about the various functions on this campus, five different building types emerged. So we have public facing buildings on the campus, secure buildings, healthcare-related buildings, housing, warehouse and service buildings, and mixed-use buildings. One Look Fits All approach is not going to be successful on this campus because each of these different building types have unique needs that must be considered in the standards. So using a healthcare facilities prototype as an example, I wanted to share how a few of these standards can be applied. The architectural standards address physical components of the building, like building massing strategies. Horizontal and vertical buildings, horizontal and vertical building breaks help to create softer and interesting building forms for a more welcoming and identifiable approach to a building. These massing strategies can also be used to define different programs within a building. Building materials. The standards recommend the types of materials to use and the scale of building elements at different levels of a building. On the ground floor, it is suggested to use natural materials to create a warmer approach to the building, and smaller human-scale elements like windows. And as you go higher on floors, you'll have larger-scale elements. The standards also consider intuitive wayfinding strategies into material selections, like changing the type or color of materials at building entries to help naturally guide the people to where they need to go. Site design standards help to guide decision-making around the exterior of buildings. We have standards for furniture, both fixed and mobile, depending on the intended functions. Fencing standards are addressed. What you see here is security fencing. The standards define minimum height requirements and performance measures for this type of fencing. Arrival areas and drop-off zones are considered. Paving and areas shall use distinct materials, textures, or colors to define pedestrian drop-off zones and create a sense of arrival. Surface parking standards. To improve pedestrian safety, comfort, and overall experience, surface parking areas shall incorporate pedestrian sidewalks, crosswalks, and trees within the parking area and pedestrian pathways. And here are a few sustainability standards put into use. The facade shading. Horizontal facade shading shall be provided to the south to avoid harsh daylight exposure. There is also a standard for vertical facade shading from the west and the east, but there's no requirement from the north. For indoor comfort, window wall ratios should not exceed 50% in the south, east, and west, and not to exceed 60% in the north. And the final one I would like to mention is solar panels for renewable energy to support the county's zero net energy policy for new construction and major renovations. The standard is flexible on the location of the panels, but for this example, we use roof panels. And these are just examples of some of the standards that are in the Design and Development Standards. The Design and Development Standards contains much more than just architectural, site design, and sustainable standards. Some other sections include access and connectivity standards. This section considers how various modes of transportation, vehicle, public transportation, bicycles, and pedestrians interact and navigate on the campus. The landscape standards define different zones of landscaping, from structured landscape closer to buildings to a more natural landscape as you move further away from buildings. This section also provides a plant palette incorporating native flora and plant species into the future design strategies. Signage and wayfinding standards. The standards identify a color palette for each sub-campus and a standard signage design strategy to connect all the campuses together. And we ran out the standards with public art standards, exterior lighting standards, safety and security standards, and implementation standards. And before I end, the design development team collaborated with a few departments and divisions through this process to ensure alignment of these standards across the county. Planning and Development, Public Works Transportation, Public Works Water Resources Division, the Arts Commission, Facilities, Real Property, and Capital Projects Divisions of General Services were all involved to create these standards. And with that, I will pass it over to Michael Milroy, Project Manager for Ultra Systems, our county's environmental consultant, to present the final EIR.
Thank you, Ashton. Thank you. So the location of the campus is 323 acres, out of which there were 96.59 acres identified for potential development, and 44.79 acres could be developed with interventions such as fire hazard mitigation and landfill site mitigation. Here's a constraints overlay showing a number of constraints, including fire hazard severity zones, debris and sediment management, which is up in the Public Safety Campus, up at the north end, in the north end of the campus. There are the foothill closed landfill, 100-year flood zones, and also faults, and environmentally sensitive habitat. And then Galletus Cemetery down in the Community Services Campus, which is a non-county property. And then certainly, the red areas are slopes with more than 20% grade. So the purpose of the master plan is to develop a long-range vision for the future of the campus. The goals, as Kirk, to summarize what Kirk went over, are to eliminate buildings beyond their useful lives, determine the highest and best use of campus land and properties, identify department synergies to streamline service delivery, and maximize current vacant space, both within underutilized buildings as well as vacant land. The master plan schedule involves seven phases, over seven conceptual phases, over an approximately 30-year period. The California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, was passed for several purposes. It requires state and local agencies to analyze and consider environmental impacts of a project as the agencies are deciding whether to approve the project, to inform decision-makers in the public about the proposed project and environmental impacts of the project. It provides an opportunity for agencies in the public to comment on environmental issues, identifies ways to reduce or avoid environmental impacts through mitigation and/or project alternatives, and to disclose significant and unavoidable impacts. The final environmental impact report contains an introduction to the project. It is a program-level environmental impact report, intended to be carried out, as Kirk said, in 18 different projects. Each of those projects is intended to have its own CEQA document that would be more focused on that particular project. A response to comments, those being comments that were submitted on the draft environmental impact report, revisions, clarifications, and corrections to the draft environmental impact report, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and technical appendices. As far as the impacts that were identified in the environmental impact report, the impacts to several topics were identified as no impact or less-than-significant impact in the initial study, and thus were not analyzed in detail in the final EIR. Those are agriculture and forestry resources, land use and planning, mineral resources, population and housing, public services, and recreation. As far as impacts that were analyzed in detail in the final EIR, some of them were determined to be less-than-significant without requiring mitigation. Those are aesthetics, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, and utilities and service systems. Several other impacts were determined to be potentially significant and require mitigation measures to reduce those impacts to less-than-significant. Those are air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, including paleontological resources, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and fire protection and wildfire hazards. All impacts were determined, pardon me, all potentially significant impacts were determined to be less-than-significant after implementation and mitigation, and there were no significant and unavoidable impacts identified. The environmental impact report process started out with preparation of an initial study in the third quarter of 2023. The initial study was distributed along with the notice of preparation of the environmental impact report in the fourth quarter of 2023. There was a public scoping meeting for the environmental impact report, held also fourth quarter of 2023. We prepared the draft EIR from the fourth quarter of 2023 through the third quarter of last year. The draft EIR was distributed for public review during the fourth quarter of last year. There was a public meeting to collect comments on the draft EIR, also fourth quarter of last year. We prepared the final environmental impact report in the fourth quarter of last year and the first quarter of this year. Public agencies provided comments on the final EIR during the first quarter of this year. We prepared a findings-of-fact document during the second quarter of this year. And today, you are conducting this hearing to consider the project for approval and the final EIR for certification. If you choose to certify the final EIR, there would be a notice of determination filed with the county clerk within the next couple of days.
Okay, so three different things that presented. So the Cali Real Master Plan itself, the design standards, and then the environmental impact report itself. So I guess at this point, we'll open it up. Obviously, as I mentioned previously, I recognize the funding's not there at this point to fund any of these projects. So, but by having approval of the EIR and, you know, when funding becomes available or we're able to get grant money or federal money or state money. or we're able to get grant money, or federal money, or state money, or we want to go out for more certificates of participation, you know, we do have this plan, and I think it's pretty exciting, and we'll see what happens. So open it to questions.
Thank you. I mean, we're clearly sitting on a gold mine. It's just a matter of when. So, questions from the board. Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Capps. And I'm supportive of certifying the environmental document here, but I realize this is a roadmap. I just don't know if it's the roadmap, you know, because, you know, this is a campus, you know, countywide resources here, you know, we're just spending $15 million on a probation building. We've got $150, $200 million we're going to spend on a jail expansion. We've got historical underinvestment in North County facilities. We've got a CIP list that is significant. And I guess the question may be, maybe CEO, just talking about what, when do we kind of maybe bring all that together? Is it, we wait till we have money, and then we'll decide that we're going to do, you know, what our highest priorities are then? How does that discussion happen? Because what I don't want to do is, I don't want to say, hey, this is our highest priority after these things. It is a, it is a high priority. I don't want to get, don't want to misstate that. I just want to make sure that we, at some point, get that discussion up here on the dais about once we move forward. I do really like this because it is an opportunistic document. There's seven phases. We get funding from the state, you know, for a mental health facility, we can just plug that in and start moving. It's all connected. I think this is money well spent, so I'm not against this whole concept. I just want to make sure I understand, and I want to also send the right message to staff on where this places with other priorities that this board may have in the future.
Supervisor through the chair, thank you for that question. And I'm going to start broad and get to then your specific answer. For many years, I've been asking the board if you want to do strategic planning, and we started the CalAreal master plan because whenever we started it, three, four years ago, with Mr. Jeff Rappel is here, we thought there was going to be money coming in through savings, through our retirement investment, and that we knew that in '29, '30, then it became '30, '31. Now, I don't know if it's '31, '32, or '30, '31, that because of the board's financial planning and SB Ser's sound policies, we would be having paid off our unfunded liability so we would have more revenue coming in. That revenue is now going to be used most likely for the jail. And so we don't have a ready source of revenue for this project, but that was the idea initially. Having said that, the idea was, as you said, yeah, this is, this is not the highest of all the priorities because we have a whole, long list of deferred maintenance projects and capital projects. But we wanted to get ready for that time in '30, in '20, '30, '31, '32, '33, to have a plan ready. And again, look for grants and see what opportunities so we could get that done. We can have that conversation. I think the conversation is going to be more about what do you want to retain and preserve because we are going to have to make reductions in this organization. And people may not believe me, but when you come to it and you're looking at the budget, you'll, you'll believe me. So it's true, this is not the highest priority on our list. We were just doing this to prepare, and we will be bringing to you different pieces of the budget. We can have a overall perspective, and you will get that when we come back to you in January with our, a plan about how we reduce the size of government.
If I could continue. One of the questions I did have about the plan was, I think I see up there in the corner the, where the fire headquarters is, there's also, we also have the county office of ed building up there, and that might present some opportunities in the future. And then also, I think, you know, we did start kicking off the conversation about what we're doing about this building and that, in the long term too, and how does that play into this? You know, is there an opportunity here to leverage this building to be able to pay for some of the, you know, real master plan in the future? And again, that's not today's conversation, but I think it's something that we should be looking at as we, we move forward, as the opportunities present themselves.
Supervisor Hartman.
Well, I just wanted to emphasize what both Chair Capps and Supervisor Nelson have already said, that this building is how we would finance it. And I, I wonder how we begin putting in place a process to look at how we would go about doing that.
Supervisor, I mean, there's lots of different ways that we could go about looking at that. We, when we, some time ago, we started looking at that, but whether we want to do housing here, for example, or how, how we would do that. And the first, the furthest we got was actually through the CalAreal master plan and trying to figure out what we could do there. We could talk about what the steps would be to do that with general services. I just don't know if we're going to have the capacity, but we can always review more and see what the steps are to get us there. I would just want to remind the board that we, that means building a new structure, which is not going to be cheap. And even if we sell this building, I don't want you to think that you're going to get the return that we may want for this building to build that. So I just caution you about, that's what I was thinking, but I don't think that's accurate anymore.
And, and I guess that would be interesting to know if, if, you know, what's the highest amount we could get for this, and where would it take us?
Good question. I don't have a formal appraisal on this building. Obviously, four stories right downtown. I mean, I'm sure it's significant, but not enough to make a huge dent in the master plan. I mean, when we've completed the master plan in 2022, the cost estimates were $407 million to do those 18 projects. My guess, based on construction escalation over the last four or five years, is probably over $800 million now. I mean, we saw that with the B-Well facility when we submitted it for B-CHIP. That project on the master plan was identified at $62 million, and we applied for $131 million. So a significant jump up, almost double, or over double.
Supervisors, I don't want us to give up hope, so I appreciate all your good ideas. I really do. We're juggling a lot, but we appreciate those good ideas, and we'll continue to look at that and be hopeful and think about what we can do as we start planning more for the future.
Supervisor Lee.
So it's a great plan, but is there something that we can do in the short time? Because touring all the buildings, the number one thing I hear is air conditioning, heating, soundproofing. Is this something we can do in the mid, in between?
Supervisor Lee through the chair, yes. I mean, we've put off some of the renovation type work in a lot of these buildings at the campus. I mean, there's deferred maintenance, as Mona mentioned, but there's also outdated HVAC equipment, and I think the longer we put off doing anything more formally with this master plan, we really will need to address those. I know there was a heat wave three years ago, and the puff was at 96 degrees at this nurses station when the AC went out. So, yeah, there are outdated systems. You know, there's, I know we've talked previously with the board on energy savings, energy efficiency type projects, and we're looking at other alternatives there. And, you know, potentially, there's some funding out there that we could tap into when we do some energy type reduction projects.
Got it. And also for the renewable energy, do you plan to have battery capacity as well in addition to solar?
We would. So as Ashton mentioned during the standards, so utilizing the net zero energy concept that the board has adopted for these buildings. And so in order to achieve that, most buildings would require some sort of a battery energy storage system tied into it in order to then realize, you know, after hours when the sun goes down, that we can then still have a stream of power.
Thank you.
Did you have any more questions, Supervisor Hartman?
Well, we were disappointed in the Prop 1 application, and I guess, I mean, it seems an enormous amount of work has gone into this, and I think you're all to be commended for doing really super work on it. And I'm just trying to think how we make some progress on the ground so it doesn't just sit as a plan on the shelf. So I guess I'm wondering, what, what are we applying for in our next round? And what have we learned from the last round? And how do we make a step forward, CEO Miasato?
My first thought was magic, but that's not, that's not an appropriate answer. I think, you know, as we've said, that, as we, the health campus is the first phase of this, and so we will continue to do that. We'll continue to seek the grant. We're going to apply again and see what we can do. And so that's good. And we want our public facing services that are out there, and the primary one is improving the behavioral health and public health campuses or county health campuses. So we'll continue to do that, look for grants. And, you know, as Supervisor Lee said, we know that there are things that are failing out there, and we're continuing to do as much maintenance as we can. There is going to be a tipping point that we always evaluate, or general services always evaluate about how big of an investment. But if we know we're going to keep these buildings for some time, we will probably start looking at that a little bit more. I don't want to say there's nothing that we can do because now that we have a plan, we can, like we said, we know, and we want, we know that we're concentrated on this first phase, and so that does help us. It helps us as staff. And just the work that Ashton's done about the standards, that's very helpful as well. It's something that we can replicate. So, like I said, and general services continues to look for grants, and we'll work with the other departments as well, BeWell, Public Health.
So specifically on the BeWell and applying for the next phase of grant money, we are working with CEO's office and with behavioral wellness to determine what's the biggest and best use going forward. So, you know, we know that Signet got money for, to build acute beds in Santa Maria. Ventura County got renovation money under the round one, and they're going to put in acute beds. So now you're going to have acute beds within, you know, an hour, hour and a half radius of, of our campus. And so is there other opportunities that aren't being addressed that we could look at and be competitive for with the grant money?
So, thank you. I had a couple of questions. I've, you can feel the, the tone here is quite restrained because we recognize that I have a lot of questions, specific questions about the plan itself, but it's really pie in the sky in a way because we're, it's a $403 million price tag to get there. So I'm going to show restraint and not ask about housing, not ask about parking and all the things that I have a lot of questions about. Because really, I'm just trying to figure out, as my colleagues have indicated, how do we get there? And in a way, in a sense, this gold mine of how many acres is it? 300?
Just over 300.
Yeah. And just going there, as many of us do regularly, it just, you feel how underutilized it is. I mean, it's a lovely space, I imagine, for those who work there daily because of, because there is so much kind of open space, but it, to me, it just, I'm happy that a goal is maximizing because, while we don't need it to be an urban dense center, we do need to maximize it, and it, it just, it's under, it's underutilized. And so I'm just wondering if there's models out there that could provide some sort of revenue without selling. That's just, you're the experts. I don't need to, to come up with them hypothetically here. That would not be wise, but just understanding that in a sense, we're, we're land-rich but cash-poor. What do we do with that as a county? Are there other counties, are there other jurisdictions that have, you know, leased out part of the space to commercial entities? Is that a potential? I just think it's an interesting point in, in our county's history to maybe explore something like that. Because again, I just see, see such potential for those buildings and the space that's just sitting there for housing, for example. We have such a housing crisis, and could there be something we could do in the short term?
We are in the process, working with community services on hiring a consultant to talk through public-private partnerships, specifically for housing, but they may have ideas on how other municipalities have done any kind of P3s as far as new construction and how that might work. So it's something we could ask once we get a consultant on board who's skilled in P3s. I mean, that is something, as far as the housing and in EIR, I mean, we had 259 housing units called out across the campus.
Yeah.
And I think we've already looked at potentially more density for those, putting more units in. So, so yeah, there's, there's opportunities there for that.
And it's such a good place, I mean, I've said this before, so at the risk of repeating, it's such an ideal place for housing, where it's situated near schools and arteries and ex. So I just want to, if I, if I'm listing my priorities, that's at the top. No surprise.
Well, I mean, one's kind of on its way with Hollister Lofts. That was one of the asterisks on that community services section.
Yep. And I do just have to ask about the jail. If we do, you know, with the plans to transition most of the population to the north, what does that mean? Is that part of the plan? If you could just speak to, I just need to understand how that fits into the picture, bigger picture.
Supervisors, either chair, I think if you, the master plan, we have the existing uses shown, and I think that at that time, and when we make decisions about whether we actually, what parts that we can close down after it's no longer needed, we would talk about, can we amend the plan and EIR to see what else we could do? I mean, so there's opportunity there, but this plan right now doesn't reflect that. Like we said, this, we started this many years ago.
Okay.
But we could always come back and amend the plan when we have more certainty.
So at this point in time, this plan presumes that that, the, the South County Jail is at capacity?
It assumes that the facilities are still there.
Correct. It showed it as a renovation back when we started this in 2019.
Okay. Other questions from the board? All right. Madam Clerk, let's see if there's any public comment, please.
Chair Capps, members of the board, we do have two requests to speak from the public on this item. We are going to Zoom, and beginning with Linda Honigman, to be followed by Mark Chitillo.
Greetings, supervisors. I'm Linda Honigman, a resident of District 2. With the very hard work on the housing element update and the steps to implement, the county has made important strides towards producing more affordable neighborhoods in the South County. The review of the workforce housing study, getting the pro-housing designation that qualifies us for grants, adding rentals to inclusionary ordinance, and examining even more county-owned parcels for possibility of future housing production were all encouraging actions. My concern now is whether the adoption of the master plan for CalAreal, which I believe was completed in 2022, might be a backward step for our future housing goals. The two parcels of the campus that made the list of additional sites to consider for housing total 205 acres. Currently, there are 116 units planned in that area as part of the Cycle 6 housing element. Quoting from the staff document, County Housing Opportunity Sites, "This site's close proximity to multifamily housing, social services, and amenities, along with the plans outlined in the CalAreal Master Plan, give it significant development potential." The master plan calls for the demolition of various existing buildings. The plan also identifies the Child Family Services Lot, Archives Parking Lot, and above B-Well Parking Deck as planned housing sites within the two parcels. The site has several leases that would need to be negotiated, so, and that could take several years. I believe that is why it was put in the moderate redevelopment potential group. Given the severity of our housing crisis and uncertainty of what will actually get built, it would seem important to keep your options open. Even a few of those 205 acres could be used effectively, and I might note, by other people paying for the construction, for, one, opportunities to plan and produce model communities that could provide examples of some of our missing unit types; two, the adaptive reuse possibilities for the downtown campus, which might require a move to the CalAreal campus; three, the possibility of using community land trusts, as recommended by the Harris Consultants, to ensure that there is adequate land set aside for affordable housing that will be needed over the next 20 years; and finally, housing innovation zones that could offer more flexibility than we are currently getting from state law and developer-driven projects that are based primarily on what we'll pencil out. The zones could incentivize businesses to bring jobs and products here. We need to find cost-effective and resilient construction methods like modular and manufactured components. For details of the above, please see the April 8 letter submitted by Strong Towns. Thank you.
We will now go to our final speaker, Mark Chitillo.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Mark Chitillo, and I'm commenting on it as an individual today. And I just wanted to ring the bell and call out that this is a potentially tectonic project that will have effects throughout the city of Santa Barbara and the South Coast, but it's been proceeding with limited public engagement and avoiding the normal development review process. The scope project back in '23 included the potential to change the county seat, and the FEIR described the potential relocation of the county functions at the admin and engineering buildings, as you've discussed. That would have the effect of- That would have the effect of moving hundreds of jobs out of the downtown core and direct jobs and then thousands of indirect jobs. It's the government equivalent of moving, of approving a big box mall, moving the urban area to the edge between, between existing urban areas of the city of Galita and Santa Barbara with impacts to jobs, housing, transit, services, and approving a very car-centric approach to the future, which is not the direction that we've been intending to go. The process, because this is a government, it's county-owned land, has avoided any review by the Planning Commission, the BARs, any of the county's advisory committees, especially with respect to the design and development standards that you're considering approving to now, today, today. There's been very limited community engagement. The sequel process was announced through a press release. There were a total of three public comments and totaling five pages on this project, which by Santa Barbara standards is very limited. And I think it prejudices the community's acceptance and the potential vitality of this project. I note in the development and design standards, there's no biological standards whatsoever despite the fact that there's ASHA on-site, and that's actually identified as a primary goal of the project, one of the goals. The use of a programmatic EIR will result in tiering and probably exemptions for the future parts of the project, so don't believe that there's going to be future environmental review as a matter of fact. There needs to be enhanced community involvement. We need a complete project description of the future uses of the project. There should be review of this project by the Planning Commission, BAR, and your advisory committee. And there needs to be a general plan consistency analysis and compliance with 65402 of the government code in the, as well as confer, consultation with the cities that are involved. I understand funding limits mean that this process is probably not going to go anywhere right away, and I would urge your board not to certify this programmatic EIR, but direct staff to get additional public input, both from the public at large, as well as perform a general plan consistency analysis, and get the input from the Planning Commission, BAR, planning and development department, and from the affected cities. I understand the need for the project and I think it's a laudable goal. However, the process that's been conducted so far is one that really does require, it's less than we're accustomed to seeing in Santa Barbara and given the severity, the significance of this project and the importance to our community, would implore your board to move slowly and ensure that there is the opportunity for a more full-throated level of public engagement to come up with the best possible project, such as the prior speaker indicated the importance of ensuring that we conform the project to the current housing circumstances. So Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for consideration of my comments and concerns here.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you to our speakers. Any other comments or questions on that? I just did want to ask about the Planning Commission, if it's, if this goes through the Planning Commission, I just don't know process-wise what the situation is. Anybody know?
Madam Chair, Supervisors, because this is a county project outside of the coastal zone, it wouldn't require county permits, but at some point, a 65402 determination would go to the Planning Commission at a later stage, likely when buildings are authorized or constructions authorized.
So eventually, okay.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I mean, this is, that's troubling what Mr. Chitillo was saying, just because, I mean, the five of us represent the public. I mean, we're all elected, you know, it's a public process. There's a roomful of people that want to speak on it? Absolutely not. There's not. Because they trust us to make these decisions, they know these things are going to come in the future. And I know that he makes his living off of these types of deals, so obviously he wants a more robust process because there's potential people to sue. So I get his motivation, but I do think that this is inherently a very public process. You've got publicly elected officials who are, you know, all up here because our constituents put us up here to make these decisions on their behalf. And I know a public process is great, but you know what? The public process happens constantly. We're all involved in it, in conversations with our constituents and the community as these things progress. And I think that's the mentality that Mr. Chitillo is referring to, is what's gummed up Santa Barbara County for the last 40 years. And I think this board has stopped playing those games and has been moving forward and trying to advance projects more efficiently and effectively while still respecting the community, and I think that's what you see here. And I'm glad that this is moving forward the way it is. You know, if Mr. Chitillo had his way, this thing would never happen because it'd be stuck in a process indefinitely, like most things that happen in this county. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Harmon?
I think those are rather harsh comments, but what I will say is that the public has limited attention and time, and I think they really focus when something is more imminent. And I think, thinking about how far out this is, it's hard to get engaged. So I'm prepared to support the document, the environmental certified document and support the plan. I think that it is an enormous amount of work on the part of the county and I guess maybe I would ask, just to run through, because you went through rather quickly on the public engagement piece of it, but it looked like you did a great deal in the connection to the EIR process.
Yes, there, I have a list of approximately 75 agencies and organizations that we notified of the EIR. There is also a, no, I don't have, there's a second list I don't have with me right at the moment, it is on my computer, of approximately, well, several hundred people and organizations within 500, within a 500-foot radius of the campus that were notified by mail. And then there were also the press release, the newspaper articles, so on and so forth. And so, yes, there was, there was a lot of public notification of the EIR, yes.
Right. But until there's some controversy, it's really hard to get people to come out. I do think that Santa Barbara is highly desirable place to be because the community has played a major role in shaping how it's developed. I realize we're in a new era now and we have to make up for some lost time and build more housing, but I think public engagement is really critical, but I think we've done all we can, given there's not a lot of controversy surrounding this at this point.
Okay. Supervisor, it looks as though we're ready for a motion. Would anyone like to make it?
I'll make, I'll move staff recommendation.
And that would be A through D.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we are going to go back to departmental item number three with an update from our planning director. We're just waiting to get it online, so. So it's in front of it, but not yet for the public, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Chair Caps and members of the board, that is correct. We do have it available here in the hearing room and in the back of the room, and I am about to pass them out to the board members as well. And it can be reflected on the screen, but it is not online yet for the public. So if we could just wait a few moments to have that available for the public.
Okay.
Could have been me. Thank you. No, you didn't.
I was like, oh, when I was on bed, I was like, I don't know if this is going to generate any interest.
Bob will find a way.
Bob, huh?
We don't want to cut this as one of those, you know, a half-day for, you know, our county pay, right? You know, Andy might.
Pardon? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Celebrate planning department. You don't have to. I'm sure that, you know, people.
Oh. Chair Caps and members of the board, I'm happy to announce that the additional slide that is available in the back of the room and online, as you can see in front of you, is now available online for the public as well.
Okay, great. And just to explain the delay, we want to make sure that the public has access to everything that we're deciding up here. So that was what we were waiting for, so now they do. And so now, let's just take it back to these now five objective standards that we're considering. So, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Chair Caps, Supervisors. Earlier this morning, we talked in the hearing that the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for emergency shelters included four standards that are allowed under state law. You directed us to add an additional, a fifth objective standard for security. So what we did is we went back and looked at the government code, and actually, we're recommending that you just adopt the language that's in the government code that lists the objective standards that are allowed for emergency shelters. And that's number five that we've listed on this slide. So that's taken directly from the government code. Specifically, it comes from government code 65583. Thank you, Chair Capps, supervisors. Earlier this morning, we talked in the hearing that the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for emergency shelters included four standards that are allowed under state law. You directed us to add an additional, a fifth objective standard for security. So what we did is we went back and looked at the government code, and actually, we're recommending that you just adopt the language that's in the government code that lists the objective standards that are allowed for emergency shelters. And that's number five that we've listed on this slide. So that's taken directly from the government code. Specifically, it comes from government code six, five, five, eight, three, A four, B eight. And we would plug it into the development standards that are in the emergency shelter amendments.
Any board members have any reaction to that or questions? We're good? Okay, I think with that, I'd entertain a motion that would include that addition, additional standard of security. I think that's.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we're on departmental item number three, and that's.
A through E.
A through. Did you say D? I just want to make sure. E, okay.
E with.
Great.
Board direction for that.
With board direction included. And I have motion, and you have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. And that concludes our departmental items for the day. County Council, please read us out for closed session.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The board is scheduled to meet in closed session on three items of existing litigation. Zimmer versus County of Santa Barbara, Californians for Home ownership versus the county, and Richard Ranch LLC versus the county. They're all Santa Barbara Superior Court cases. And also, public employee performance evaluation for directors of the following departments: agricultural commissioner, behavioral wellness, child support services, community services, county health, fire, general services, human resources, information technology, planning and development, probation, public defender, public works, and social services. And the time estimate is an hour and a half.
Okay, that's a lot to get through for closed session. So I imagine we'll be back around two o'clock to adjourn. All right. Thanks, everybody.
All right, we are back from closed session. County Council please read us out please.
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the board. The board met in closed session on three items of existing litigation, Zimmer versus the county, California's for homeownership versus the county and Richard Vance versus the county, and on a series of public employee performance evaluations listed in the agenda and the board took no reportable action.
Okay, thanks everybody. We can adjourn this meeting and we will see you next week on July 1st back here in Santa Barbara. We're adjourned. Thanks.